We're going to call to order the town of Old Saverbrook zoning commission. Uh, three oh two Main Street, Old Saverbrook, Connecticut. It's our regular Monday, September fifteenth, twenty twenty five, seven P M. First floor conference room. Role call, myself, Markel Dorella Chair, Jerry Lewis Vice Chair, Dr. Henry Secretary, Bob Friedman and Laura Gray, uh, regular commission members. And we also have all of our alternate members here tonight, Brenda Dyson, uh, Michael Kelly and Casey Castello Hand. Um, in addition, we have Joanne Dally, our recording clerk and our Z E O officer, Chris Costa. And we have one presenter in the audience and three online, correct?
Five.
Five? Okay, okay, okay. You're gonna have to probably admit it in any other. Moving on to the regular business, our minutes from uh, our zoning meeting on Monday, August eighteenth, twenty twenty five at seven P M. Is there a motion to approve?
A move to approve the minutes of August eighteenth, twenty twenty five as presented.
For second.
Seconded by Jerry Lewis. Any discussion, corrections? Not hearing any move to vote. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, staying, passes five zero zero. Thank you. Uh, no correspondence other than what we have for applications tonight, correct? And moving on to new business, uh, first item is Hanford Commons application for minor modification to approve site plan. Number twenty-two dash zero nine six for nineteen unit affordable housing. Development to relocate fire pit pergola and replace relocated paver patio with turf grass. At one oh nine Lynch Street, map thirty-six, lot eighty-nine, Residence A District pedestrian node. Applicant Hanford Commons LLC owner, one oh nine Lynch Street LLC agent, Seinfeld Bot, meet me. Mr. Ott or whoever is presenting this evening.
Yes, um. Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, good evening. Uh, just for the record, I'm Mike Ott. I'm a licensed professional engineer and land surveyor with Summer Hill Civil Engineers and Land Surveyors in Madison. And um, I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant, Hanford Commons LLC. For, as the chairman said, um, to present this request for approval to modify the original site plan for um, the project at one oh nine Lynch Street. Uh, which is the building. I'm sure you're all familiar with the building. It's now just about finished, I believe, on the corner of Lynch Street and Elm Street. Um, and I, uh, the original approval was in um two thousand and twenty-two, I, I believe. So the, the modifications requested, the modifications that have been made in the field and requested are, um, actually, um, may I share my screen, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
It might be, might be easier if I show you the, uh, I'll try to do that now. It might be easier if I show you the um, Asbilt for the site. Uh, just bear, bear with me one second, please. See if I can do this. Okay. Can the, can the commission see my screen now?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna zoom in a bit here. Um, so um Lynch Street, as you can see, um, left to right on the bottom and Elm Street sort of up and down on, on the right. Um, so the modifications are uh, that are requested, um, this is the garage building that was approved as part of the original application. And on the south side, left of this garage, uh, a patio and a pergola were proposed. That, that pergola has been moved to the opposite side of the site here, if you can see my cursor. Hopefully moving.
Yes.
Um, and the, the patio area has been replaced with an area um, ki- ki- kind of a, a common outdoor space area to the right or um, north of the parking lot. And I can, I can kind of trace it. Hopefully you can see this with my cursor. It's, it's this area that I'm tracing. So ra- rather than the patio, um, this area has been surfaced with a, a synthetic turf um, product. So I'll, I'll kind of trace that again. Hopefully you can see it. And then, um, the only other two changes are that a grill was added, an outdoor grill. And a, and an outdoor fire pit was added. So those, those are the changes that, that we um, have submitted this application for to request approval. And I, you know, I'd be glad to answer any questions the commission might have.
Any questions from commissioners?
Is it fire pit gas or is it wood?
I, I do not know, actually. I, I would imagine it's gas. There, there is a gas service to the building. And, and I would imagine it's gas, knowing, knowing this owner developer, I would, I would guess that it's gas, but I don't know for sure, to be honest.
Any other questions?
We, we received by email today and I received some green copies of the specification. It was a turf grass. When, where, where is that area again?
Um, I can, hopefully you can see my cursor, I hope. Um, and I'll, I'll trace the area and if you, hopefully you can see my cursor moving. But it's, it's this area to the right.
All the way down.
Yeah.
That if I, so the fire pit, oh, fire pit would be located on top of the plastic turf?
It, it, the fire pit is located within the turf area. There's a, I was out there looking at it today. Again, there's a um concrete circular area that the fire pit is within. So the fire pit is not sitting on top of the synthetic turf. It's, it's sitting within a circular concrete area. That, that's what this circle represents that the surveyor showed on the Asbilt survey.
Alright, so um. Was just, just, just noting for the record, although it's um not pertinent to this eight dash thirty G uh, modification is that uh, the area designated for this artificial turf is basically for uh, walking of pedestrians and or, and or, and or pets, maybe, that uh um, might use this area and therefore it uh uh, is not a natural vegetation, so it's similar to pervious pavers. And it is therefore not landscaping. And uh, this inner Residence A District would ordinarily be required to have fifty percent landscaping on the site. And this further reduces uh, the, the total landscaping. Just for the record.
Commissioners? Comment the question?
Yeah, I do have a quick question. Is that already done?
Yes.
It's already done, right? It's already.
It, it is. It, that's why. So this is the Asbilt survey? Yep.
Are, are, uh, in section sixty-three and landscaping screaming, screening and buffering in the right-hand column in the gray area. So for the purpose of this section, previous landscaping consists of any or following or combination turf grass.
Artificial turf grass is not included.
Not included. Correct.
Right. Cause we don't allow artificial.
Well, you can have artificial turf grass on a property, but uh, it does not count as landscaping. And if this is an amenity for this eight dash thirty G application, then it's um hard, hard for the commission to argue that uh, the accessory use of a walking area and fire pit and pergola is uh it's an amenity for the, for the residential use on the property. So ordinarily, it would be allowed. But it wouldn't count towards landscaping.
Correct.
And the landscaping being non-compliant has been noted, so.
Attorney Shansky's got her hand up.
Yes, Attorney Shansky.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Attorney Marjorie Shansky. I represent the developer and I appreciate the commissioners' comments. Uh, my take on section sixty-three is um, that it doesn't specify uh, what the turf grass is. And this is simply a synthetic turf grass, which is a pervious installation. Um, and it drains water in the same way that uh, natural uh, grass would do. And so uh, and I also looked around in the state of Connecticut. Hartford appears to be one of the only jurisdictions that actually has a ban on synthetic turf. So I think respectfully, that there's room for the commission to, within its discretion, find that this uh, turf grass, which is a pervious product um, is permissible uh, to um, satisfy landscaping in that column uh, definition that exists in section sixty-three, for your consideration.
Thank you. Is there a um current plan uh, proposed? I see it's warranted for fifteen years for maintenance and replacement of this turf grass?
As you know, with, with eight thirty G developments, there's a high degree of stewardship associated with their um, administration. So I think that uh, and the commitment that this developer has to an attractive outcome and an attractive product uh, should give you assurance that it will be treated in a way that perpetuates its beauty.
Okay, thank you. Um. Yes, Mr. Ott?
Um, sorry, Mr. Chairman. I, I should have pointed out and I zoomed in a little bit so you could all see this, but there is there, there is um, plant material. There's a row of arborvitae along this westerly property line and along the northerly property line. There's also two trees actually within the um, since synthetic turf surfaced area.
Yeah.
It is, as we know, this is not landscaping, but this is acceptable. Are there any other questions from commissioners?
I was just wondering where it was previously.
Was on the other side.
Next to the garage.
It was here.
Right, yeah, okay.
Okay. Um, not hearing any other questions. Is there a motion? Oh, first of all, I gotta, sorry, it's a public, is it public? No, it's not public. Since there, is there a motion on the Hanford Commons application?
I'll make a motion to approve the application for minor modification to the previously approved site plan for uh, portable housing, uh, eight dash thirty G at one oh nine Lynch Street, map thirty-six, lot eighty-nine, Residence A District. And with, with the note that the artificial turf does not count as landscaping. But the application is approved, is, I move to approve the application.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Jerry Lewis. Any further discussion or questions? Not hearing anyone move on to a vote. All those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, abstains, passes five zero zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Yeah, good night.
You too.
Moving on, uh, public hearings, uh, Walmart application for special exception used to add an online pickup door, reconfigure the parking lot, including eleven pickup spaces. New signs and safety improvements. And safety improvement at six sixty-five Boston Post Road, Sesame's map thirty-six. Uh, lot one oh three Shopping Center, B two District pedestrian node. Applicant is Walmart. Agent has stepped forward and action is open public hearing. Continue or close by October eighth, twenty twenty-five and no long, no later than October nineteenth of twenty twenty-five. I, I, before I turn it over to the applicant, I just, um, we did get one piece of information today from the A R V and I'll, I'll read it into the record regarding the Walmart application for special exception use, which was already uh, read. But this uh, from the um Andre Laffieri, Chairman states his memorandum serves to report the zoning commission that members discussed this application at the September eighth, twenty twenty-five A R V meeting, but felt that pertinent building dimensions had been left out of plan. So the commission was unable to ascertain if the signed dimensions met Old Saver's guidelines. Additional information was requested with this topic to be continued to the next A R V meeting of September twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. So we don't have our report in A R V who will lead us to continue this meeting uh, to the naturally scheduled.
Just housekeeping too, well, since you started that. We did send referrals out to the building official, fire marshal, fire chief um, and the, our police chief, um building fire chief and police chief had no comments on this. Um, they did not receive anything from the health director, but I don't really think it's a major health issue that for pickup signs and so forth.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, do please. Well, glad to be here, everybody. Um, good evening. My name is Ben Jevnak, uh, with Fuller Engineering. Office located at sixty-five Rasal Road, West Hartford, Connecticut. Here on behalf of Walmart to present the proposed improvements to the Old Saverbrook Walmart, located in the shopping center at six sixty-five Boston Post Road. This is an existing Walmart, as I'm sure many of you have shopped at before. Uh, under reference, uh, the plan I have on my screen right now is an existing conditions plan. North is to the bottom left of the page. You'll see Boston Post Road towards the top with Elm Street towards the right. Can zoom into the Walmart parking area now for you. Uh, the main purpose of this application is to improve upon the online pickup parking operations at this location. Currently, there exists some online parking in the main center from parking field here. I can skip over to our proposed site plan. We're kind of a side-by-side view of the changes, moving into the proposed. We're proposing eleven online pickup parking spaces located in the, uh, located on the planned view left, uh, right up front of the main vestibule entrance. Uh, additional doors are to be located on the north side of the building, one of which will be utilized as a Walmart associate dispense path. While there will cart out online orders to waiting vehicles. In addition to the pickup parking modifications, Walmart's parking area will be restripped. Uh, safety and wave binding signage enhanced for improved safety. Uh, this includes modifications to crosswalks and stop bars. The new signs include stop signs, pedestrian crossing signs and wayfinding signage uh, to locate these parking spaces. Um, as you had pointed out, Chairman, uh, we received comments from uh, A R V at their September eighth meeting. We greatly appreciated their feedback. Uh, and the architects currently working through revisions addressing these comments and they will be able to present to it at the September twenty-second uh, meeting for A R V. We're also in receipt of comments from the uh, the engineer Jacobson Associates, uh, which we received late last week. We're currently in the process of reviewing these comments with Walmart uh, and plan on addressing with a formal letter back to the town. Uh, appreciate your time and look forward to hearing any feedback from the commission side.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, uh, questions or comments?
Have a question.
Yes.
So a door or two doors?
The new, the new, the proposed.
So there will be an associate uh, door to the um, the upper P tier. And then uh, as it currently is proposed on these plans, uh, one more, uh, one more door on this side. Uh, there has been potential revisions to include a third door in this area. Only one will be used as that associate dispense path.
This, this plan here right now only shows one door, correct?
But it has the second one uh, showing directly planned view south of the associate's door.
Yeah, that's what confused me.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So you, make sure I understand this correctly, is that there are the addition currently of two new doors on that side of the building for pickup.
Yeah, as these plans currently show, yes.
And your question had to do with, are they single or double doors?
Well, no, actually, it was one or two separate doors
Okay.
being added in there. I, I kind of got the idea of the one through the top of the picture, maybe.
Yeah, it was not very well defined. I had to search for it myself initially, but.
So the one, the one door at the top, the proposed associate ORD door. When it's all figured out.
Online pickup dispense. So that's where you can park in the space. Uh, you basically text into the app or call in, uh, an associate will bring out your order, load it into your trunk, and then you get to drive away.
Gotcha. So that's going to happen from up there at the top?
Yes, this top door with the crosswalk leading down to the pickup spaces here.
And is it, uh, am I correct in understanding that there's also going to be a small roof or protruding um, overhang?
Yes, there will be a canopy above that door.
Both of them.
Um, that, as it currently, yes, yes, both of those.
And the, the parking. Well, I, I'll get to that after these, but you get your questions answered then. Okay. Anyone else have questions? Do you have questions?
I heard canopy. And I've seen canopy on the plans, but I couldn't detect any particular uh thing that could be a canopy on the site elevation drawings. So uh, where do I find the dimensions of the canopy regarding the, its height and length and width?
Yes, the architect will be uh, submitting revised drawings as well uh, as addressing those A R V comments and all of those will be dimensioned on those plans.
So it adds to the building footprint, right? It's attached to the building?
It will be attached to the building.
So the building got bigger because it's permanent, it's more or less permanent in nature. And the building area is measured by the drip line. And presuming that the canopy would collect rainwater and drip farther away from the building, there's an expansion to the building. And so we have, have to look at building and structure coverage numbers for the site. So we'll, we'll, I'll get back to that. But uh, the canopy is in addition to the building. Um. I looked on the, the plans regarding the, your relocation of pickup spaces. And in fifty-one point six point four point B, point two point C, it says that the existing uses should be shown, but I, I didn't see where the existing pickup spaces are today. I drove through the lot and I saw that there are eight signs um, in the parking area um. And, but I don't see them anywhere on the plans. And those are existing and should be shown if they're going to be moved. And if there are eight there today, I see that there's a uh, a table in here with the numbers regarding signs and whatever. And I summed up the number of signs in the table and came up with twenty-two. So some of those eight are part of that twenty-two. What are the other fourteen spaces? That fourteen signs and where are they going to be located on the, on the site plan with parking spaces? Where, where all those signs would be located?
Uh, so for, to answer your first question regarding the existing signs, um, on these, this uh, pickup striping demolition, demolition plan, there is a zoomed-in view uh, displaying those eight as well as a follow-up on the existing conditions plan towards the front of the set. That boxes out that area as well. Um, and then to move forward into your other questions regarding the additional signs that you had uh, mentioned, each of those pickup parking signs will be located in the baller. And there will be a, a series of them located there, one for the number and like a column beneath it as well. So each of those ballers, one that contain a handful of signs.
Well, the parking areas under your control and use. But the use of signs on the site is a zoning concern. And each site in the, in this district is allowed to have four directional signs on the property. And they're limited in dimensions. It's in the rings. It's four square feet total. And it seems to me that with that, uh, the, the table showing twenty-two signs that that far exceeds what's allowed on the site for directional signs. There are means of uh, allocating spaces for customer use with uh, signs at the end of the area that would cut down, well, today I saw eight. Seems to me there could have been just two, one at each end to indicate that all the spaces in between are so designated. But to have eight signs for the same use is overkill. Especially with regard to the aesthetics of uh, the parking lot, which otherwise doesn't meet landscaping, uh, internal parking lot landscaping requirements or uh, number of parking spaces in a row, either fifteen next to one another or forced parking aisles in a row without an intervening landscaped island. So there's a lot of things in the parking area which already are non-conformities. And additional signage uh, just reinforces those non-conformities without addressing them at all. And if there are changes to be made to the size of the building and the parking configuration, then our section ten specifically says that non-conformity should be addressed wherever possible. And I think the non-conformity, as Mr. Jacobson also pointed out in his letter, that those non-conformities should be addressed. Uh. Also, I have a question regarding the hours of operation. I looked in the statement of use and in section fifty-one point six point four point A, it specifically lists the requirement of a station of use, statement of use to have the hours of operation. And if the hours of operation are the same as when the store is open, you have to say so. And if the hours of operation are to be different, which someday one might think of as a uh, a very large vending machine could be open twenty-four seven and you place your order online and pay for it and drive up, and a person or eventually a machine delivers it to the outside, we need to know what the hours of operation with this application will be in the statement of use. And then, yeah.
So the, the one thing is the applicant did ask about the non-conformities and um, what's in Jeff's letter, as well as the chairman of A R V, I did not verify, says there's some thirty-nine signs on the property. Um, and the applicant asked, what's the, you know, the tolerance with, you know, I obviously reduction of non-conformities, but there's also some questions about ADA and so forth. So I think as much guidance as you can give the applicant going through the items in Jeff's letter as well as the signs would be helpful to the applicant. They'll be in front of A R V next week and in front of you again. So I can only give the guidance of reduction of non-conformities, but I think it would be helpful to the applicant if we could maybe narrow it down a little, a little bit.
Do I identify all the non-conformities or?
Well, I think it would be impossible for them to eliminate every
Right.
non-conformity, but to address the comments, you know, at a minimum in Jeff's letter and some comments on on the signs. And lighting, I mean, they'll, they'll.
Yeah, there, there's a number over here on the signs. I mean, uh, to your point, whether it's twenty-two or thirty plus, depending on what A R V has counted, actually way too many signs.
Right.
That it would significantly increase the non-conformity of, of the, of the uh, property. So our guidance, as, as Bob had given you a few minutes ago, states it very clearly as to what is allowed. I think it would um be of the applicant's best interest, as well as the zoning commission's best interest, to try to adhere to those as closely as possible. Without, without increasing.
In section sixty-four, which is signs, it says sixty-four point three point thirty, seventy-five square feet maximum is like across the whole town. But in the section sixty-four point five point five B wall sign in the B two district. It specifically says that the first wall sign uh if it's not internally illuminated would be seventy five square feet. If it is internally illuminated, the first wall sign a maximum forty square feet. And for the second wall sign, uh if it's internally illuminated, the maximum square footage is twenty five. And so even using the three thirty second in scale, which is um. A unique, it 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 I've seen it before, so I have a scale and I could measure. But the proposed signs on the uh Walmart signs are definitely bigger than what is allowed by regulations. Even if the ARB couldn't measure with the three thirty seconds equals one inch scale, but.
And that is something um they will be addressing uh and they'll be able to present at the next ARB meeting.
That goes for both signs, the one on the group one side. That's visible from the Marshall's area, Marshall and the uh and the one on the the other side. Uh with the majority of the parking. And where your proposed pickup changes are located. And my question also has to do with um. Uh the wall signs that you have have, uh the do they have the the asterisk as part of the logo? Because the proposed ones do not and would just. Be clear about if the proposed ones do not include the asterisk. Yellow of gold, whatever that used to be there, then we'll make certain that we um capture that. In the dimensions of the sign, but this the regulations tell how to measure the rectangle. Uh for what constitutes the sign. No, I hadn't noticed that before, but Bob's pointing out, I don't know, the asterisk. It's not, it isn't on any of them.
I believe with the latest signage, the uh the Walmart spark uh logo uh has been removed, yes.
Any other commissioners? Comments? Um I have one regarding parking um. Based on a current. Configuration, it's required for three hundred ninety five, you you only have three hundred sixty five on here, Jeff has. Pointed out, plus he also points out there's a number, I think it's eleven other spaces that are. Absorbed by uh storage of um outdoor garden equipment um. I think was it one one parking space for every hundred and seventy five square feet?
About it's a shopping center, so.
Yeah.
You get parking calculations are um. In in a case in this on this lot, it would be based on a a shopping center.
Shopping center.
And I think you're. I think is it one seventy five or two?
Two hundred, I think.
I think it was one seventy five.
I think we changed it to two hundred, that was.
Retail store generally one space for every one hundred and seventy five square feet. It's sixty two point four point six point B point. Yeah, point D.
They use one of two point five.
And so it's a other. They use two twenty five.
So there's a shopping center. But this was the one that remember Max's place?
Yeah.
Uh requested which is one per two twenty five when you have a minimum of a hundred and.
Okay, so it's two twenty five. What is the square footage of the?
Of the existing Walmart?
Yes.
A little over eighty nine thousand square feet, eighty nine thousand five hundred.
With potential small increase with the roof over and.
Uh if it canopy is included, yes, it would be a small step as well.
And the canopy, while it's not inside the walls of the building, uh the canopy and the area under it. Add to the square footage of the parking calculation.
Yes, if uh if that's the canopy's theme part of the building, yes.
Oh, and the other stuff that's in the parking lot, there's a lot less there now than there was. Earlier in the growing season, but all of those items should be shown on the plans as well. Is that constituted use of the property and usurpation of the parking spaces that should be provided?
So to remind the commission, Walmart has a seasonal outdoor permit that they renew annually. Um we kind of asked not to see it every year, it was the same configuration, so that's wrapping up. The end of the season for their outdoor garden center, so that typically will go away probably in the next month. And then all the Christmas trees go inside and the parking lot's clear and Black Friday comes and. Lots of spaces again.
Jeff, also I had a question regarding um number of required loading spaces. Six are required and three are provided.
Right.
Is that something that's being taken under consideration for discussion?
Um additional loading bays are not proposed uh with this current application, they do have a designated. Loading day on the north side of the building um in terms of other loading areas, uh we have not designated on the plans.
And there currently isn't any uh snow coverage or reserve area?
With the uh nothing again found out in the plans, but assuming with the uh the vegetated areas, the islands uh would be used for snow storage. Um as well as pretty much the perimeter of the parking lot uh would be used as well.
We have to, I believe, if not correct, commissioners, correct me if I'm wrong, that that has to be designated onto the plan.
Okay, yes, we can add to our plans um be able to present through it.
Always, I saw the photos of existing pylon signs one and two. Now, why not number three? There are three.
For the pylon signs out onto Alan's well as Boston Post. Uh we'll uh we'll connect with him in text and they'll have that uh potentially addressed for the ARB meeting.
And the. Other use that I note was not on the uh. Divided plans was the storage area for the blue rhino tanks. Outside the building in this area where the pickup is supposed to go. It's a almost fenced in area with uh some pallets and a lot of uh propane tanks. And if that's a use that's on the property currently, it should be depicted on the plans as existing. And when it would be changed to.
Understood, I'll make a note of that as well to add to the divisions. Thank you.
And where will those go if you're still gonna gonna if they're gonna get moved, where are they going?
Uh most likely uh as they currently are located, but I'll have to get back to you on that answer.
Um is the plan still to um restripe the entire parking area?
Yes, yes, as far as uh as part of this, they will be restriping uh the entire lot.
So as a as a result of doing that. The there's a requirement that the spaces for ADA have to be met. Which they're not on. What we have in front of us.
Yep, uh so I uh the Jacobson's uh comment, uh we will be uh adding revised dimensioning to those ADA spaces.
I I would I would say and commissioners can can chime in on this one, that's a very important one.
Hmm.
To this commission that the ADA compliance needs to be met, particularly. Since you they're going to restripe the entire parking lot, there should be no exception as to why it can't be met.
I completely understand it's something that we've already been uh looking into after sending this letter last week.
Okay, we're just trying to highlight. The can. Beer. Subject matters, I believe. Um they cut uh the lighting, there's some new lighting proposed. On the building, uh I know you've seen that at full cutoff, dark sky compliant. Um there are uh living residents to the, what would that be, the east or north, north? Uh there that that have to be taken into consideration, uh particularly where you're going to relocate the pickup area. Uh and travel, which I would anticipate you would want well lit, but we we need to have it lit. Correct.
That completely understand, uh and we can uh prove for around a specification chart that it is uh full uh dark sky, but okay.
As part of the. I guess the. Jeff Jacobson's comments and some of the things you want to incorporate, can you provide a? I guess a tabulated parking. You know, a lot of a lot of uh drawings come to us and they kind of tabulate the drawings, so we don't have to count three hundred and ninety six. Parking spaces, you know what I'm saying? So there it was twelve in that section, fifteen and how you add them all up? Because it's certainly better to be how. Uh without commentary space and I can't count because I don't understand where the parking really is. So just so it's clear to us when we come back, that would be great.
So you'd like a table included with the parking?
At least have a parking room, you know, with the numbers in it.
Uh similar to, and you have to kind of zoom in a little far for this, but if you look at the screen on the existing spaces, uh this is what you're looking for.
Yep.
In terms of each parking row, tabulate the number.
Is it there?
Uh that this is for the existing and there is no change in uh total parking count for the site, so these would still hold true. Uh with the restructuring of the ADA, there might be uh a potential reduction in sentences, but that won't be substantial.
Yeah, apparently so.
Yes, uh yeah, apologies for the.
Yeah.
For the scale on that.
But that's okay.
We'll we'll make them pop a little more and show them on more.
If you need a full uh. Explanation of what that charts look for, the the CEO officer could send you an example. Um there was a lot of questions uh relative to lighting in the sense of the light poles.
Yeah.
There were missing poles on the plan that weren't identified. Um a number of them exceeded our fourteen foot height, a number of them. Uh were not at the five foot uh recess from the curb as required in our zoning regulations. Um is that, I I know it's just going to be taken under consideration. Uh uh by your team when you come back, but um I think that is something that needs to be um looked at. Uh with commissioners. Uh agree with that?
Yes.
Agreed.
The light bulbs at the.
This this plan on the screen is. Not the same as the hard copy.
I don't know.
Well, it's just the.
Really.
That one had the existing pickup area with hash. Dash lines, oh, that's that's the one on that we have on paper. But the other one you showed had a rectangle with dash lines that showed the existing pickup area. Right? And when I was there today, I saw eight spaces with pickup signs that were single face. So that's showing. Two. Spaces on both sides, but the signs designate pickup area only on one side. And so the other spaces on the side of the sign with nothing on on the sign, those are also pickup spaces?
Uh those are uh.
And that would make and that what that would make for sixteen pickup spaces. So I'm looking for consistency here and I'm not, I'm having trouble finding.
Uh the plans show the the one sided face, so that's not in existing conditions and there are only eight existing, correct?
And what did you call today?
It it just seems to me that regulation. Fifty fifty one point five is site plan objectives. In fifty one point five point one and fifty one point five point two, talk about a complete application and conformance with zoning regulations. And what I see here tonight is an incomplete application, lacking a number of things noted by Mr. Jacobson. And here in the meeting tonight, and I find that this uh is. Is an application on the table when to me uh under section fifty one point three. This might have also been used as a an informal discussion of a site plan. In order for you to receive feedback about the things that uh on a preliminary site plan, you would not be held to the content thereof. And we would have a discussion about the things that the commission feels. Uh need particular attention with regard to conformant to the regulations. And it this should have been an informal discussion of site plan under fifty one three. But that's not what this is because there's a there's an active application.
Right.
And I for one see it as a um it it's not in conformance with the regulations. And it's and it's also incomplete. And as such, um. I could. Make a motion to deny based on what we have in front of us tonight.
That's correct.
So I guess I'm. I'm I'm I I'm prepared to do that and I I if I make a motion and a motion to deny is denied. Then nothing happens because it's a denial of a denial, because it's not an approval. But I certainly can't make a motion to approve, so.
Good ethical as well.
Yes, I did.
Well, I guess I have a question, like a sort of more general question. You have a lot of pickups. Which I think uh. Got into.
Yeah.
Um but my, so my question is, we have these pickup signs in the back, but if someone isn't that familiar with the property. And they come in off of Boston Post Road, like to the other side of Walmart where that other entrance is. How will they know if they don't like already know because they're familiar with it, how will they know to go around to the back?
So as a part of this, we do have a wayfinding signage on one of the sheets. Um as previously mentioned, uh I believe the site was only about to have four. We originally had proposed wayfinding signage out to the entrances to direct people to back of those spaces, but as the plans currently stand. It's only really when you enter the Walmart premises that you'll that you'll start to see that wayfinding signage.
Right, so to me, it seems like having done like the drive up pickup at other. Places. Once you're like in the right parking lot, it's not that hard to find the pickup area. But if I'm in the totally wrong parking lot. And I don't know the site. I'm not gonna, I mean. Like the first time I ever came here, it took me a little while to figure out. Where to go, you know, now I always know, I always come in through the back and come in through stuff, you know, and go around that way, but like. It everyone might not know that, so just something to consider. Um and then the other, uh these are small, three small questions. Relatively speaking, um I see that you have the the proposed banner, is that something that's okay under our? Regulation, I wasn't clear, because I know it says you can't have moving signs, but I wasn't sure.
I said I.
The position on that.
To to Bob's point, what you just said a few minutes ago.
Yeah.
We're looking at a uh incomplete application, okay, and they've yet to go in front of ARB.
Right.
Where a lot of those questions would would be addressed, okay, but then followed up by this commission afterwards. I think the point at hand here is where we're at based on this application and what's been provided. Is that we could do a couple of things. We could uh vote to continue, we could vote to close public hearing and deliberate and um potentially deny. Based on an incomplete application. My inclination is based on what we have here uh with little information available to us. That it is an incomplete application, um and unfortunate that it would need to be. Uh denied, so I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing.
And when in public.
Oh, sorry, yes, thank you. Uh there's no one in the audience uh here, is there anyone online wishing to speak? In favor of or against this application? Please raise your hand. There's a hand raised.
Mr. David? Uh yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, uh my name is Jeff Davis, um I'm with PP2 Architecture and Engineering. And I've been listening in on the on the uh um. On the meeting, um. Our firm has basically uh the exterior paint and exterior signs, meaning the building signs. Uh not the uh parking lot signs, so I can speak a little bit. I know we're uh working on getting our plans revised for the uh ARB meeting next Monday. Um but I can address, uh I got some of your questions, um. I know that the uh existing signs um. Uh are out of compliance with your code and uh just looking. Uh are out of compliance with your code and uh just looking by um. You know, the back of the envelope math that I have done for um. Uh you know, scaling out, uh the proposed signs will also be out of compliance. Um but uh right now, as it stands, uh Walmart is dropping the uh, the yellow spark. Um so that is, that is planned. The uh um existing signs uh on the building, there is my thing. So currently um. Total signage is for the building is two hundred and forty-one point three six square feet. Um the uh front elevation sign with the removal of the spark um is going to be. Uh twenty-six point three percent smaller than what is existing in square foot area on the front of the building. Um the rear, rear elevation sign um is going to be. Approximately seventy-one percent smaller than what is on, currently on the building uh in itself. Um I heard that the uh uh. The uh uh standards in your uh town zoning code is uh forty. Square feet, these are going to be internally illuminated signs. Uh is forty square feet and twenty-five square feet for the rear of the building. So, you know, we do acknowledge that, that, you know, we are going to be uh over in square footage, um but. Our sign package is going to be markedly reduced from what is existing on the building right now. Um and then during the ARB, it um, it was brought up to our attention that uh. Uh with the uh um. Uh the color, the color temperature of the signs cannot be more than three thousand Kelvin. And the uh. Uh brightness of the signs cannot exceed uh twelve hundred lumens, so. Uh we're working with the manufacturers to see if we can, you know, make that happen, and they're saying that, they're telling me that they can, they can make that uh. You know, make that happen with um. The new signs that are being proposed for the building.
Anything else?
Um, no, sir. Um just getting ready for next Monday.
Okay, thank you.
So just one.
Yes.
Question, no matter which way this goes, finders was the banners on the light poles were not permitted. That's what I told the apple.
Yes. I'm sorry, Chris.
Oh, no, no, it's.
Yeah, yeah, and as the plans currently stand, there is no banner on the light pole uh anymore. And if I may, um, uh, sorry.
I'm just gonna make this suggestion, I know that was in the previous version, then it was removed, maybe it would be easier for everybody to understand if it's not. A proposed sign, not to put it. On the plan, I know that will, they, this may not be your firm, it's the folks who do the signs. But I think part of the confusion is there are so many different signs that are prototypes. That are on here, but they may not all be used for it, so I think it was a little overwhelming with. The signs that are either non-conforming on the site were signs. That were never permitted on the site, and then the proposed having signs that may not. The, that are not being proposed, but are kind of a Walmart prototype, I think that may make it easier. For everybody to understand. By taking those off of the site that I'm just for next week.
You, you were gonna say?
Oh, and if I may, uh having received Jacobson's comments uh late last week, uh we're fully prepared to, to work with him and the town to alleviate any of uh the concerns you have with this application. Um go into the ARB next week and, and hopefully receiving a positive referral from them, uh we'll make the next zoning commission meeting uh that person will be.
Okay, a question on the table is to the commissioner is do we want to close public hearing? Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to close public hearing.
On the Walmart application for special exceptions?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Seven.
Seconded by Laura Gray, any discussion? On hearing any, go to a vote, all those in favor, signal by saying aye, aye, opposed, abstained? You opposed? Okay, so one, four yeas, one nay, any abstains? No, passes four, one, zero. Um are we prepared to uh deliberate on this this evening or make a motion relative to this application?
Wes. I make a motion to deny this application. For. Hmm. Uh special exception use. To add the online pickup door and reconfigure the parking lot. Including eleven pickup spaces, new signs and safety improvement. At six sixty-five Boston Post Road, uh in the shopping center B two district in the pedestrian node, as Walmart has the applicant. With a special regard to section um. Fifty-one point five. Fifty-one point five point one. The complete application is a requirement of the regulations, and the application is incomplete. Because it. Fails to show existing uses in the parking area. Uh near where these pickup spaces are presently located, it doesn't show where the uh. Present signage indicates the pickup spaces are and the. Uh it does, it doesn't give the. Wall sign dimensions uh in a useful form other than a three thirty seconds equals one foot scale. And the wall signs proposed uh do not meet the regulations as specified in sixty-four point five point five point B. In the B two district. Uh regarding the square footage and whether or not it's internally illuminated, doesn't matter here because the. Proposed signs are larger than allowed in, in either case. The application as noted by Mr. Jacobson lacked the um a building in the parking area. And the height of the light poles and uh, I admit there's a light pole missing. And the fact that the uh non-conformities uh that have been noted have not been addressed and should be. In accord with our section ten. Of the regulations.
Is there a, is there a second?
Second, I.
Seconded by Jerry Lewis, is there any further discussion? Not hearing any, we'll move to a vote, and we'll do it if you would raise your hand, all those uh. Uh uh in favor, signal by saying aye, aye. Opposed, abstained, passes five, zero, zero. Thank you.
For future, I would recommend you in invoking section fifty-one point three informal discussion of site plan. That you present your concept and sufficient details. To indicate what it is you wish to move from where it is to where it would be going. In, and, and other items that would demonstrate compliance with the regulations. And we would have a discussion before an application hit the tape.
Having received the Jacobson letter uh late last week, I wish we uh were, were able to address any, and alleviate any of your concerns uh inside.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to, I don't know, six committee representative and staff reports.
So one thing that came up tonight was the first time it's come up for me is. Um artificial landscaping. Um I think I heard it kind of clearly tonight that. Landscaping should be natural, um but. Should we try to address some tolerance potentially? Or artificial turf, or should we just clarify? Obviously, it's not listed as permitted. Do we clarify that it's prohibited? I, I don't think it's horrible in the circumstance we saw this evening, but. You could have someone who's gonna come in, if it were determined to be landscaping, which you did not. Want to. Have artificial turf for their entire property, next thing you know, you have artificial trees, I don't think that's. Where you're going with it, is that something?
Well, if we had an application of the eighty unit subdivision. Do we want artificial turf? Not. Leave developed, I think it's something that we need to take a look at, one of those things that. Has kind of gotten by us, we hadn't really focused on it, I think on the application. Earlier, the small amount of space is reasonable. Um but I think we need to take a hard look at it and see what it really means and what we should or should not do.
Ever notice if uh other artificial turf talks about their permeability and. Created ring and all this stuff, I don't, I don't know anything about that, but.
I don't, I don't think any of us do at this point, since it's relatively new to us.
Hmm, well, I mean, it's, I mean, tonight you were pretty clear, it wasn't, it's not natural, it's not permitted, do you want to? Entertain having some of it permitted or just have a flat-out no vegetation should be natural?
Well, I think Bob, as like the position that the commission talked about, my understanding was that. It's not prohibited, you just can't count it towards landscaping, right? So you can't count it towards your minimum required landscaping area.
I, I think Bob was saying because it was an eight thirty G.
Think that's right.
I let them get away with it a little bit, but it's still, it's not landscaping, right?
Right, so could someone have, if they meet their required landscaping? And then on top of that, they want to have artificial turf? Like outside of that, would that then be permitted, I guess?
I think, does it, does it really come down to whether do we allow artificial?
At all.
At all? Or only natural bang? And I don't see a. Sitting here with the limited knowledge we have, the exposure of this applicant, we don't, I, I, I don't see where that's possible. So I, I think we should be, we should take a look at it, educate ourselves on it. I'm of the inclination that artificial would not be allowed.
Yeah.
I just think it's, I think it's interesting that they, whoever this company is, American Sun Turf. Address the very issue, probably a little backing with punch holes, and they give you some data, so they've done some.
Yeah.
They've probably been up against this question before, and this is a way for them to sell it, or at least make it. Um appropriate for landscaping.
Yeah.
Let's, let's see how we should do that, but I don't know if we should, we should at least understand it. Educate ourselves somewhat.
Yeah, I guess I also will say, like, I've seen artificial turf applications for playing fields.
Hmm.
And so that might, we might not want to like entirely prohibit it in case.
I mean, we did allow it for the playing field, but that was the use, it had nothing to do with the landscaping or any of the other.
Right.
Amenities, this is, you know. When this came up, I said, well, gee, how do we address this? Because landscaping is typically. Natural, so is it something? Which I think the board kind of said tonight, landscaping is landscaping, it's natural. But if you open the door and say, oh, a little turf here and there is okay, you know, what are the, what's the limits, is it? You know, how much of it, I mean, you could have properties that are all turf, and in the middle of the winter, when everything's snow, you're gonna have this big bright green. You know, patches as you dry, you know, I mean, it's aesthetics, it's into the environment, you know. And the other thing is the upkeep, so it's not as though you put it down once. And, and there's different grades and qualities, and you have to, to clean it, and I don't know if you vacuum it so that the permeability. So you could have, you know, one person who's maintains it, keeps it great, and the property sells, and you have someone who doesn't take care of it, you have. Parking lot islands with old clogged artificial turf.
And you have a fire pit on top of artificial grass.
Say that.
Wants the flammability of.
Fire pits thing we're talking about, yeah.
Which isn't on the spec sheet, nor have either, so that's.
Well, that's the.
It doesn't mention whether or not it's fireproof.
No.
Yeah, right.
Right.
And if the building allows dogs. Here, are they gonna go down?
Well, that's another one, yeah, which.
Well, it does say on that it's somewhat pet friendly. And I was.
Say that.
I was at a hotel, and they had a whole artificial grass area, and that was for, for the dogs.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
So I didn't have, I wasn't there to watch anybody clean it or anybody use it, but at the same time, anyway, it was one of those, it was kind of like, oh, that's interesting.
I just, that and bubble gum, it just sounds terrible, yeah.
So do we answer your, your direction as to what?
All right, so we're gonna keep the interpretation, grass is natural.
It's not.
Turf, yeah, not artificial, artificial turf unless at some point we revisit it for a regulation change. We can investigate it a little further, I'm assuming it's not a. Priority, but it's the first time it's come up.
It will come up again.
I'm sure as well.
Look, because this happened, it wasn't a precedence being established, that we, that it is the law because it is.
Well, there was the modification to the site plan.
Right. What was there for, was it natural gas, the original?
The original purple, there was no turf, nothing artificial on them, so I think that's.
Because it wasn't even at that, it wasn't even in that area.
I mean, it was done, then they came in here and said, oh.
Right.
Yeah, they showed it, they're built. I, I just don't know, that opens a can of worms now. Well, how come they?
Well, I, I think that. The way was because it was an affordable housing application.
So you're right, the fall underneath that, and then.
But I think overall, we need to, if you're saying landscaping is landscaping from now on, we just need to be clear with folks, their grass is. Not artificial.
Right.
Because I mean, you know, and you think about it, it's landscaped, and we're gonna, I mean, look at how many people have potted plants in front of their house that they buy. In stores, they're, they're artificial, I mean, we could have artificial trees, and we could have artificial.
I mean, it's.
But again, I mean, it's, so is it, you know, what's the tolerance for the commission? I mean, I always thought it was natural, that's why this threw me for a bit of a loop. So. Natural, okay. Uh I did send you an email about those CAM changes, coastal site plan review. We're just gonna, I suspect with the amount of time it's gonna take for referrals, it's. It's unfortunately gonna hold up. A lot of the administrative reviews with the thirty-five day mandatory referral, so you may get some complaints. Um as far as the applications, I think. Planning can also review them, obviously, if something's going to ZVA, they can review them, but I think I'm gonna try to. Disperse what comes in as I schedule in between the commissions versus sending them all to. The same, the busier commissions, if that makes sense, so some for planning, some for zoning, those that go to ZVA, I'll know a little bit more um. In October, as Deep gets their guidance together on that. We have application wanted to discuss with you. Um this is for the old Hunter's ambulance on Boston Post Road. It's a little bit of a different one, I asked them to submit a statement of use, they actually submitted an application. This is for Ace Elite. And it is uh cheerleading, tumbling, coaching.
Oh, in that building, you mean?
Hmm, so they teach cheerleaders, competitive cheer, tumbling and performance. They have travel teams throughout the East Coast, they have eight to twelve athletes per team. Three to six teams a season, classes for the team and non-team members are weekly in addition to practice. They have three to five part-time coaches, teams range from eight to eighteen. Uh and the facility, the former Hunters would be used for ambulance only, they have a drop-off policy, parents are encouraged not to stay. For practice, they have an Ace Elite in Madison, um that they said they've had no issues with. Um the only other. Boston Post Road East. It's not Hunters, it's um now it's Hartford, it's, it's a Hartford.
It's not still my house printing, I think, doesn't pass. Past White House printing, the building where it used to be Hunter ambulance, now it's, that's where this. Wants to be in that building.
This is.
It's three, three oh nine A, Lost and Close Road.
It's from the back portion of that building.
Oh, I believe they're.
Or is it the whole building?
They're in the front portion, back, there's a company called Per, uh, Performance Turf Innovations that I don't. Have any, you know, appropriate turf innovation, um, and I don't have any. But, and I asked them to get some descriptions of who was in the building and they said, we don't know what they do, but they are gone at four o'clock. So the cheerleading is Monday through Friday from four to eight, Saturday and Sunday, nine to two, the thirty-five hundred square foot. Open gym area with four hundred square feet of parents viewing, a hundred and fifteen for athletes in a three hundred and thirty-five square foot office. For, uh, forty-three. Total four thousand three hundred and fifty square feet.
So what would you like from us?
I mean, is it something?
We can handle administratively or?
Or you want to see?
Why not handle it administratively, I mean, what?
So I guess you're a retail service, I guess the concern would be. You had a lot of. Cheerleaders convening, when we have a parking issue. Well, they're saying they're just doing this for training.
Clarify with them that they're, you know.
Yeah.
Competitive and tell share. But I think you could handle that administratively.
Alright, so as long as there's no.
Yeah, I mean, now, yeah.
Tell you something, maybe.
Maybe you could find out what they do before.
So you're just gonna hide, so I needed to kind of take a look. At your regulations, sixty-eight. Point, one point two.
Possibly we'll have to come back when they're trying to.
Yes, we have those year regulations.
I know, what they said was.
Yeah.
Just because this stuff lets the water go through, doesn't mean the soil underneath lets the water.
Yeah, exactly.
And the water then builds us.
Yeah.
So. You could skate on it. Sixty-eight point one point two V nine of your regulations, sixty-eight point one point two V nine. Special setbacks from title wetlands, we had made an exemption. And there was, uh. Misinterpretation or miscommunication where we allowed. For vertical expansions within the fifty feet, so if you wanted to add a second story, you didn't have to go for a variance as long as there was. Um. No excavation or creating, so it said vertical expansion modifications or additions above a pre-existing legally nonconforming structure. Located within the fifty feet. When excavation and grading is not required and the existing stu- structure remains intact and is not rebuilt. We would allow, so that would allow a dormer, it would allow for a second floor and so forth, well. The, I have a proposal. And someone bought a house based on it, that they were gonna cantilever decks, but there's nothing below it. So there's no legally nonconforming structure. So I'll kind of pass on, I just put two Xs on it, so it's within the fifty feet of the title that one setback. You can look at the pictures there, the proposal is to cantilever them off the house. So vertical expansion modifications or additions above, so this really isn't above. But it has no excavation or grading required.
Is this not diametrically opposed to to the AM review stuff from the P E E requirements?
Well, it would be cantilevering over, it would still count as coverage. But it would cantilever into the fifty feet, I guess what I'm struggling with is if it's, there's no legally nonconforming structure underneath it. That's what I was saying.
Well, if it, if it. Says it has to be, this is something under it.
Well, this says above a pre-existing legally nonconforming.
Oh, I know that.
So I said I would double check with the commission, but.
So it's this little box?
The two boxes, there are two decks, so look at the next page, look at the next page.
They're up in the air.
Look at, turn the page, Bob.
But I'm struggling with the above, that's.
Oh, I see.
Well, no, you don't have, there is the fifty feet, you're a dormer and you're within the fifty feet.
Right, you're just going up.
But no place of.
You can't have it.
Because wasn't that?
You can't have it, I don't, I have to find it, it's in our rigs, you're not supposed to have a balcony from a second story.
There are more decks than.
It's a deck, yes.
It's a balcony.
You can't have a deck off of a half story.
Isn't that the same thing that happened on Main Street?
You can't have a.
Five oh nine Main Street.
A half story.
No, they, well, they put. By Lighthouse Lane, the four thousand housing units downstairs and the other upstairs. And they pushed the bay window out upstairs and where was it, a deck? Anyway, something, something.
I think it looked like a deck.
It's like a deck, yeah, something got pushed out and all it did was reduce the amount of light that gets in downstairs.
Right.
But this is one on top of another, I think there's something in here.
That's a half story. You can't have a balcony, but a half, so there's a new story.
Because this is.
So the question is. I mean. It's not above.
You can't have a balcony on the half store.
It's not a good deal.
It looks like it's on the second story.
Vertical expansion modification or additions above a pre-existing legally nonconforming structure located with the, within fifty feet. When excavation and grading is not required and the structure remains intact and is not rebuilt is an exemption. But I don't think that's above.
No, because it's above the existing structure. These are not above the existing structure.
It's not a structure, right?
Then I would come back and that was. That was my spin and I do need to take that back, so the answer is, your answer is consistent with.
Yes.
Okay, would you ever like change a regulation? To allow that? Alright, no, I'm just, I'll change it.
Better, better not be covered, even with a refractable awning.
So since it's not above. An existing structure, and I know it's within the fifty feet.
No, not yet.
Well, I did.
Had a sunlight.
Not a lot. So eight, three oh nine. Um, what else, yeah, so Twelve Bell Air Drive is under contract, that's.
I know, how can that be?
So they're removing everything, um, so that they can close and they would like to. The buyer doesn't want a lawsuit to come along with the closing package, so, uh. For the most part, the zoning violations have been removed and we talked to Matt and I talked to Mark. So I would assume the commission would like their legal fees recovered, so. We may be able to close that one now, is that, if that's what you'd like to do or you just?
Yes.
Yeah, it's been a long process.
Yes.
Now.
So regulation changes, I I keep adding to them. Um, so you add to them, I add to them, kind of our miscellaneous all the things such as the Twelve Bell Air case. Um, you know, a pergola over your entire property, I don't know, is that a landscape pergola? Um, we talked about a number of these over the past year, so, so I'll get working on that and start getting you those changes we talked about. Um. I have to refresh, there was a number of regulation fixes problems, that's why I asked about this last one. Because of them putting them together, we have to amend our coastal site plan regs to reflect. That single family houses are no longer an exemption, we talked about alleviating or removing the A D U requirement. For lot size if it met the health code. Um, and there was a few other things, so. If we're slow, I'll put that back together, we can. See where we're going and I think that's it, unless you have something else for me, oh, um. Karen Dooley is working part-time in our offices, so that land use tax, so she's been. I identifying potential violations, she's not doing enforcement and advising property owners that. Maybe their signs as well as real estate agents don't beat the regulations. So we're working on that, she'll see how that goes, but she's learning how people love to. Um, get letters in the mail, so. It's about it.
Just, um. One thing I noticed over the last couple of weeks, that fine pedals, they have like a dozen.
I talked to Ben, that's her fine pedal fest, yeah.
Okay.
I saw that too, getting off the highway.
I don't know, it's they're having fine pedal fest, so that was.
That was his.
It's some kind of a weekend, I think it's this weekend. Did they take them down?
Um, you know, honestly, I went by there twice today, I've never seen.
And I talked to him, I don't.
I think they're still there.
I think they are still there for cycle.
How about the, the guy with the, um, reflective film, he's got all the bollards in front?
We're still public, so. Anything else?
I'll just question about the turf then, did we make a decision?
Naturally.
Okay, so we don't have to talk about it anymore, so good. Unless we want to come up with a reason why we would want to prevent it. Okay, I was wondering if we were gonna study it. But it's.
Individually, take a look at it, if there's something brought up, we can revisit it, but right now it's natural.
Okay. I I think it kind of opens a door in you. You have artificial grass, then you have an artificial tree, and all the plants on your patio are artificial, just kind of.
Um, I'll make a motion to adjourn. By Jerry Lewis, all in favor, aye, opposed, abstains, thank you very much, everyone.